Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of January 11th, 2024 to order. And we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm continuing, Councilmember Garner's great idea of having our students do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have partnered with Terry Cutover and Do the Right Thing, and Police Chief Andy Mills, and the Palm Springs Unified School District to select two students who have done great things for our city. So please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kayden Vaughn and Jayden Hong. Both students are fifth graders at Catherine Finchey Elementary School. Their moms are teachers at Catherine Finchey, and these two boys are excellent role models and students. Kayden and Jayden are part of the Gifted and Talented Program. They participate in after-school programs at their school and have found a love for cooking. Me too. In addition to doing well academically, they are positive role models to their peers. They will continue to shine throughout their academic careers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, City Clerk, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem DeHart.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
All members present.
Okay, as we have no presentations, I believe our city manager has an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I did want to recognize and introduce to you Wayne Olson, our new Chief Economic Development Officer, another member of our team. I wanted to introduce him to you, have him maybe come forward to the podium, just say a very quick word, and get him introduced to the community. So Wayne, come forward.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. I want to say thank you, and thank you to the staff here at City Hall for making my onboarding easy and a warm welcome. I appreciate that. I have been visiting and coming to Palm Springs since 1999 as a guest and visitor, and my husband and I had the great fortune to move our home here in 2018, and looking forward to working with the city on this great opportunity. Dean Grubel, who is our business district administrator, and I have been working hard on meeting the community, meeting all the businesses, both big and small, out there who have so many great needs and ideas on how to help our economy here in Palm Springs. I've also been meeting with other members of the community with great vision and great ideas on also how to grow the economy. I'm looking forward to working with the council, Scott, and staff in developing those ideas. I just want to take a quick second to share an email address for those listening who may want to connect with us regarding any business interests, concerns, or questions. You may email myself or dean@business.info@palm springs ca.gov. Again, that's business.info@palm springs ca.gov. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or a council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or a vote? I believe Councilmember Middleton wanted to recuse on 1C.
1C, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion for acceptance of the agenda? Second.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Garner, seconded by me. Passes 5-0. At this time, I invite the city attorney, Ryan Giboya, to provide a report in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members of the public. The council met in closed session pursuant to the items listed on the closed session agenda, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is public testimony. This time, it's been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda or item or items you are speaking about. Please note the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's written comment that you wish to distribute to the City Council members, please hand it to the clerk. The first speaker is Al Jones, followed by Carol Talashet.
I'm here on behalf of the trustees of the Public Library, and so I'm speaking to item 3C. As you know, I'm city-appointed representative as a trustee of the Public Library. I also serve as its treasurer. And on behalf of the trustees of the Public Library of the Palm Springs community that we serve, we're urging the council to approve item 3C, the scope of work. And the scope of work includes for the Palm Springs library renovation projects, sorry about that, Ron, main library renovations, and the J.C. Frey Building rehabilitation to establish guidelines for the remaining architectural and engineering work related to the design and development. The library today is not the library I think any of us in this room experienced, I must tell you. When I was appointed as a trustee of the Public Library, I had no idea of the scope of services. I was remembering the library that I attended and used regularly in the 1960s. The scope of services that the library provides, is that my time? No, okay. Scope of services the library provides is really remarkable. We actually, the library is also serving as a haven for LGBT youth in the community. It's kind of a safe place. And it's for seniors who rely on services of the library for their daily life to enrich it. It's just a remarkable facility. It far exceeds what I understood a library was doing, because I remember the library of old. And so what we need to do, we're a first-class city, we need a first-class library, and it's gone through all of the public review, strong support at all levels. So with that, I will conclude my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Talashet, filed by Bill Wiley.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Carol Talashay. I'm here in regards to 3C. As a member of the Palm Springs Library Foundation, I have lived in Palm Springs for over 40 years, have seen many changes, mostly favorable. There has never been a change to the library. We need it desperately. We are so looking for your agreed approval of 3C. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for miss pronouncing your name. The next speaker is Bill Wiley, followed by David Norgard.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Bill Wiley from the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation, speaking to 3C. And I've heard, pardon me, I've heard Mayor Bernstein refer to the city as a arts and culture city, which we, of course, agree with. And we also know the genius behind Measure J and how tourism is driving the Measure J revenues. And so we see arts and culture also driving tourism with modernism and the Film Festival and so forth. And we think a city with this kind of profile would really do well to have a first-rate library, and we encourage you to continue the project, and we'll stand with you on that project. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Norgard, followed by Corey Roskin.
Good evening. My name is David Norgard. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library, and I rise to speak to item 3C. As a trustee as well as a city resident, I urge you to act favorably on that item. When operating at its best, a public library today serves a critical purpose in our society. It does not just make resources available to inform or entertain. A library's collections and programs open the mind to different points of view, and new ways of thinking. It creates social capital, the dividends of which accrue to individual and community alike. Put simply, libraries nurture civil society. They build community. They build democracy. Sadly, across our country, school and public libraries are under threat. They are being dismantled, book by banned book, program by canceled program. But in Palm Springs, we have an opportunity to take a stand for knowledge, for the open exchange of ideas, for the wisdom that comes from being exposed to diverse perspectives, wisdom that lives in our library's collections and breathes through its programs. With the proposal before you, we can meet our own standard of excellence and be the world-class city with the 21st century world-class library. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Corey Roskin, followed by Dwayne Ratliff.
Hello. Greetings, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Corey Roskin, and I am a member of the Palm Springs Library Foundation, as well as many of our other wonderful members here today. And I'm also here to speak on item 3C, approval of the scope of work for the public library renovation projects. And I would also like to encourage you to consider supporting the approval of the scope of work. In a former life, I worked for the city of West Hollywood for almost 30 years, some similarities to Palm Springs, and I worked in social services and literary arts programs. And during that time, I consistently saw our library and library complex as one of the most vital and necessary centers for literacy, educational programs and opportunities, arts and cultural activities, social services, community events, and so much more, and utilized by city residents and others from the greater Los Angeles area and even beyond. And in the four years that I've been here in Palm Springs, like the West Hollywood Library and like many, many libraries throughout the country I visited, I have found our library, the Palm Springs Library, to be also of extraordinary service in so many ways to so many people in Palm Springs and beyond. All ages, backgrounds, and interests served on a nearly daily basis. I value having the library, and I can't wait to see how it will evolve and develop during and after the renovations. I strongly believe that all libraries are beating hearts of their communities and need to be protected and nurtured. So I hope you will please see to it that this crucial resource for the community continues to thrive, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dwayne Ratliff, followed by Joe Agati.
Hello. My name is Dwayne Ratliff, and I'm here with the members of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. I'm speaking on item 3C. This is a little personal for me, because when I was a young child, I grew up in a very violent household. We were poor. And it was a particularly violent day, and I walked by a pretty building that had books in it. The heat was on, the lights were on, and I walked in just to get away from my house. I started looking at magazines because I couldn't read, looking for the life that I would want to someday have. I learned the Dewey Decimal System. Unfortunately, it's gone. But I learned to read. I had other things. So the library made me turn my disadvantage into advantage. So it was that pretty building that drew me in. I became an author. I now live down here. My life has been wonderful, and we need to turn this library into another pretty building so another boy or girl from a domestic household could come in, see hope, and decide, you know, I'm going to better my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Agati, followed by David Sidley.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having me here. And guess what? I'm on the board too. But I'm a little bit of an oddball, because luckily, I've had a career of the last 40 years of designing furniture that's been used in probably over 1,000 libraries across the country at this point. I've seen libraries, you know, come and go in terms of styles and changes. And we've seen a lot of things happen over the years. Many times, people have questioned, do we really need libraries in the future? Are they going to go away? And over and over again, that's been proven wrong. Libraries are a haven. They're a haven for your community. And they're kind of a cornerstone for any facilities, you know, or any municipality. And when I look at, you know, who uses the library, you know, it's a haven for elderly, young families and their children, people from all walks of life, people of different economic backgrounds. And when you have this kind of a building or institution, to me, it's like a temple. But it's got to be warm and inviting. You know, you got to want to be in there. And you need to make it comfortable and make it a place to work and work, you know, by yourself or with people, or by yourself around other people. And that's what Palm Springs needs here. Being new to the community, seeing the library, boy, I don't want to make any comments, but it needs work. And I hope you fight it in your hearts to promote this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Sidley, followed by Rebecca Alarte.
Good evening. My name is David Sidley, and I'm the president of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. I'm here to speak on item 3C. I have a bunch of comments prepared, and there's been a bunch of eloquent speakers before me. You know why we're here. You know how, I believe you know how important the library is to this community, and specifically to the underprivileged people in this community, and the people that rely on that place for, you know, a lot of stuff. I would urge you to vote yes on 3C, and we look forward to working with you to see that project come to fruition and see how great the library can be. And we think it's like the jewel in the crown to kind of round out the circle for the greatness that this city is. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rebecca Alarte, followed by Rosemary Flaherty.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much. My name is Rebecca Alarte, and I'm also here to speak on 3C with members of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. As David mentioned, there have been a lot of eloquent speakers, and I just wanted to say that I've spent the past 12 or 13 years working in Big Tech, and that's a risky statement, but I've sat front row at the promises and failures of access to information for everybody. And I see how important it is for that information to have stewards along with us, our library staff, librarians, to have a community with you in gaining access to knowledge and information, and how important that plays in someone's ability to decipher information and be able to see the humanity in others. And I feel like the library is a critical place to be able to unlock the online world for people and to be able to have a physical space to share with their community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rosemary Flaherty, followed by Robin Meltzer.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Flaherty, and I'm a member of the Board of the Friends of the Public Library. So I'm approaching this from a great deal of excitement and hope towards the renovation of the entire library, but specifically the Frey Building. The Frey Building is where the Friends store thousands of books. We hold big book sales. We sell thousands of books, and then we make thousands of dollars that translate directly into programs that are free to the public. So we have a very important mission, and we also have grown considerably in the past three years in the scope, in the attendance of the book sales, and in many different projects and programs and events that we sponsor. And in order to sponsor these, we need space. We need storage space for the books. It would be great to have a book sale where the public could come and see a really rock and Frey building. That was just beautiful. a really rockin' Frye Building that was just beautiful that they wanted to come to for things besides book sales that we could provide them for. So the Frye Building, without the Frye Building, I'm really not sure how the Friends would function, because the footprint seems to be a little bit narrower from the perspective of the renovation of the large library. So we really need that space. We need it to be improved, and we will use it to the fullest of advantage for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robin Meltzer, followed by Serena Liederman.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Robin Meltzer, and I, too, am part of the Palm Springs Library Foundation, addressing Item 3C. I hope you will support Group 4's Scope of Work for the Palm Springs Library renovation. Libraries represent a place for all people to learn, gather, and create community. Palm Springs is a world-class city, and it's time that our library reflected that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Serena Liederman, followed by Don Barrett.
Good evening. My name is Serena Liederman, and I am also here with the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. You've heard from everyone else today, and we've certainly had some eloquent speakers. I wanted to share with you that what I've been able to accomplish in my life has been a direct result of public libraries and librarians who have been willing to help me and give me access to information, the ability to apply for colleges and things that I otherwise would not have had access to. I'm raising two small daughters here in this valley, and the public library is a vital part of my ability to give them access to books that they would not otherwise have and programming that is going to be essential for them accessing additional opportunities in their lives. I would love to see that you support Item 3C this evening, because the scope of work that is before you this evening will allow the values of equity and inclusion to actually be put into place in our community through the public library system. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Barrett, followed by Gary Mahara.
Good evening. I regret that I'm not here to speak about the library. Those have been wonderful presentations on it, and I do support the library. I'm here as Chair of the Sustainability Commission Subcommittee on Waste Reduction, and I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 3B and the Subcommittee's support of that franchise agreement extension and encouraging that you extend that agreement for Palm Springs Disposal Services. As described in the staff report, Palm Springs Disposal Services has been an integral part of the city's efforts to implement the organic recycling required by SB 1383. The Subcommittee's experience is that PSDS's efforts have provided consistent and very viable expertise in developing the new services required. And most importantly, for those systems to work, they have consistently exhibited sensitivity in addressing consumers' recycling questions and concerns. We also note that the new activities proposed in the agreement extension for bulky item pickup, community cleanup, and special collection events reflect PSDS's commitment to working with the city on recycling. Two other items in the franchise extension are unrelated to waste reduction but are important for sustainability. For one, PSDS's activities on securing a zero-emission vehicle are an essential part of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Secondly, PSDS's plans to employ clients of the Navigation Center will be beneficial in preparing those clients for productive roles that reduce demands on city's safety and security services. Given PSDS's need for a longer period to contract for the needed new equipment and given their ability to incorporate expanded services, we strongly encourage approval of the extended franchise agreement.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Mahara, followed by Nancy Ferguson.
Good evening, council members, staff. Thank you for allowing us to provide some public testimony. I'm here on 3C, and I'm a board member of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. We generate income through our book sales and other good deeds to supplement the library's budget. So we pay for additional special programs such as summer reading, special children's programs, and most importantly, we feed the koi and maintain the koi pond. So, but my interest here tonight is the Frye Building. Currently, we use the Frye to sort and categorize the donated books. We receive thousands of books, and so the Frye Building is our place where we can, our volunteers, our board members can sort and categorize and price the books. Well, the Frye Building, as you may know, is in dire need of renovation. There's no heat. There's no water. There are no bathroom facilities. And when it rains, it leaks. The roof leaks. So when there's a forecast for rain, we go to the Frye. We cover the books with plastic tarps. So I would urge the council tonight, please include the Frye Building when you approve, because I know you will, when you approve 3C. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nancy Ferguson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm not going to repeat all the wonderful things that my peers have said tonight about how we're a world-class city and all the wonderful things that go on in this community. I do just want to add a little perspective, and that is that our library was built in 1975 at a time when disco, platform shoes, and angel's flight pants were in vogue. And I know some of you on the dais can remember that. I know, I certainly do. I certainly do. People think libraries are obsolete. Now that we have the internet, we have streaming platforms, we have copy shops, and of course, we have Amazon. So why do we need to go to a library? Nobody's looking at DVDs anymore. They're streaming. They're not buying books. They're either reading them online, or they're just not reading. But you know libraries still exist. You know there's a place for them, and you know they're under siege by all the people that want to ban books and stop story hours and so on and so forth. But, you know, libraries are really dynamic places, and they've been reinventing themselves for years in cities around the country to be able to continue to be a resource for their community. Because as you've heard tonight from other people, it's always been a place, a haven, a place where you could go, get help. And what I just want to add is that it's time for us to create this new library that we know we all want, and let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment to this time?
No additional speakers.
Okay. The next item is the Consent Calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Calendar with Councilmember Middleton recusing from Item 1C. Yes. Passes. Mayor Protem DeHart, did you have comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments on two items. Item O, just a big shout out to the business at 310 North Palm Canyon for taking the initiative to, on their own dime, to create and install the whimsical mid-century Palm Springs mural on the back of their building. It's a great addition to our downtown, and I just applaud their effort and encourage other businesses downtown to follow that lead and continue bringing art to public places. The other is Item G, the Approval of Contract Services for the Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant Program. And here, I just want to applaud the Palm Springs Police Department. One more time, they're bringing to council a grant that they've sought out, applied for, and were awarded that is going to help us, or help the department, reduce crime while enhancing community safety. So hats off and kudos to the police department and continued work on looking for those grants, because it does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 3A, which is a request to approve consulting service agreements for on-call project services for the Palm Springs International Airport. May we have a staff report, please?
It's to approve on-call services for airport planning, construction, engineering, architectural, and environmental. The airport uses on-call consultants for various projects related to capital development on the airport, including planning, engineering, environmental, architectural, et cetera. On June 30th of last year, our previous on-call services contract with WSP, Ginsler &amp; Associates, and RSNH expired. While we extended that contract for those firms for very specific situations, for projects that were already ongoing, the federal aviation regulations require the airport to competitively bid for any grant-funded project. And if under an on-call contract with multiple firms, we're required to specify projects and assign them to each firm. In October, the Procurement Office issued a solicitation for five disciplines, architectural, planning, engineering, construction management, and environmental. We went and bid and selected those firms. After evaluations and interviews, four firms were selected across five disciplines. Ginsler &amp; Associates for Architectural, RSNH for Engineering and Environmental, InterVistas for Planning, and ACOM for Construction Management. The total award value across those four firms is $63,700,000 across the term of five years, paid out of the airport capital budget. And for 34 identified projects, the airport is seeking approval for the city manager to execute those contracts on our behalf.
Okay. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Well, I'm going to ask some. So you're, I just want to clarify, you're coming back at a later date with the master plan update for the airport?
That's correct, the 25th of this month.
Okay, of this month. So, because there's mentions in here of the $658 million in capital projects, and where does that money come from?
That money is generated through airport revenues, so from land leases, airline revenues, public parking, grant funds, et cetera.
Okay. So this is not money that could be used anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay. And what happens, you've brought in all these consultants if we go into another, into a pandemic or something else, God forbid?
The consultants are onboarded, but we don't have to move forward with the projects necessarily. So they'll be under contract. However, we don't have to utilize those services and wouldn't have to pay them in that situation.
Okay. And when you do the master plan, you'll have some of these projects in here, the $250 million car rental and the customs facility will all be discussed later?
Correct.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is Item 3B, which is a request for an approval of the First Amendment to the amended and restated franchise agreement for solid waste collection services with Palm Springs Disposal Services. May we have a staff report, please?
See if we could have Ms. McCloy to the chambers for the presentation.
Hi, everyone. I admit I thought airport would take a little longer. So I got my exercise in for the day, just sprinting around. Hi, everyone, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Thanks for taking the time this evening to discuss a possible extension to the Palm Springs Disposal franchise agreement. So I'm going to take you through some of the basics of the proposal. Happy to answer any questions you may have about this or some of, you know, any of the things related to this proposal. I'm vamping so I can catch my breath. Okay. So a short summary here. This is the First Amendment that's being proposed to the amended and restated franchise agreement. And so I'll back up a little bit. You may be sort of wondering about this nest of terms here that we're dealing with. So last year, in September of 2022, we amended and restated the existing Palm Springs Disposal franchise agreement to accommodate SB 1383 compliance, which includes basically the composting that we're all required to participate in and receive residential services for. So this is the First Amendment that's being proposed to that amended and restated agreement. So for the lawyers in the room, you can probably correct me on the terminology. We're looking, are we saying thank you? We're looking to extend the term of the agreement to January 1st, 2034, which is about a five-year extension. And this would also include a number of different provisions that would improve the residential and commercial experience of disposal here in the city of Palm Springs. So we'll get into those details. A little bit of background, which I've touched on a bit already. So in September 2022, we looked at amending and restating this franchise agreement. We didn't have a lot of time to do this at the time. So CalRecycle and the state had all of us under pretty strict timelines. I'm sure, I know a number of you were part of those discussions when those came forward. That process involved a pretty thorough imagining of how we can incorporate those services into the new franchise. Almost every city across the state underwent a similar process. Though we did at that time also go through, you know, rate comparisons and kind of looking to make sure that we were getting the sort of the best version of that amended and restated agreement that we thought we could. Though there were a number of things that either we didn't know at the time, you know, conditions that were changing, or things that, you know, we've learned as we've been implementing that would be helpful to add in. The reason we're kind of coming back with this proposal from PSDS, a couple different, really, the center here is trucks. I love to talk about trucks. I could talk about trucks till I'm blue in the face, but I'm going to summarize by saying that we're collecting more stuff, so we both need more trucks, and we go through the trucks we have more quickly. Due to COVID-19 supply chain constraints and also just kind of extended supply chain constraints that are impacting all sectors of the market, lead times for vehicles are now looking at, you know, 24 to 36 months, usually closer to 36 months, where there used to be more of a 12-month lead time for a new vehicle. So when we're both looking at expanding the fleet, but also just performing regular vehicle replacement, we're seeing different constraints now than we even understood that we were seeing when we were doing that amended and restated agreement. The existing contract term currently does not provide for a long enough amortization period for those vehicles. So PSDS traditionally uses a seven-year amortization when you're looking at a three-year lead time for a new truck and a seven-year amortization for an agreement that ends in 2029. The numbers kind of just, they're not really lining up. So there's a few different proposals on the table here. So if the proposal is approved this evening, PSDS will purchase nine replacement vehicles at a cost of approximately $4.5 million. So that will, you know, replace the spare vehicles that they're using and help to get their vehicles up to date. They're also proposing to purchase a zero-emission vehicle for waste collection, and this would be an electric trash truck, because those are the ones where the technology is most mature. As long as those pass performance tests, so we do have very extreme summers. I drive an EV. Summer is hard on my car. My range goes down pretty significantly in the summer. But, you know, so we would want to test and make sure the trucks could run the routes and that we were able to get support from the state and from local utilities to help us augment the cost or augment the money allocated for increased costs for that. But I would be really excited about having the first electric trash truck in the valley. There's also a few expanded resident services on the table here, both in response to things that we've learned from residents, questions from council members, and just things that we've seen as we've been implementing the new programs. So one of which is offering countertop compost kitchen pails at no cost to anyone who requests them. That's something that we know will make the experience a lot easier for residents to be able to separate that food waste in the home and then take it out to their bins. Free on-call bulky item pickup will be extended to multifamily dwellings. So that's something that will add on to the twice-a-year drop-off event that multifamily dwellings would be able to take advantage of, but now they would be able to access up to four bulky item pickups a year per resident. And then PSDS will also incorporate the shredding and e-waste collection, working with our office, into their events that they already hold here at City Hall at no cost to the city. And finally, something that we're also really excited about, because especially when I think about our work in sustainability, sustainability is not just separating trash, right? It's thinking about what is the future that we're designing for all of us to live and continue to thrive in, in an environmentally and climate-positive way. And so when we look at programs like the hand-up program that PSDS is proposing, it's a really exciting way for us to get more people involved in what we call the green collar economy. And so PSDS is proposing to employ- to employ eight individuals for six months, so four at a time in six-month groups to basically as kind of a transitional step back into the labor force to help build job experience, get some more experience on a resume, and get and get some more of that work experience. And they propose to work with the navigation center to identify those candidates. And just a sense of the impact of this proposal. So it would extend, obviously, the franchise agreement for five years. It will not modify the rates as they're currently stated in the existing agreement. And these additional proposals, we think, will improve the resident experience with these collections and also provide some interesting additional benefits for our sustainability programs. And that is it. And we also have PSDs here to help with any questions as well, but happy to take any questions from the council.
Okay. Is there any discussion or additional questions from the council? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of this work. I know this represents a lot of staff time, and so appreciate it. Also appreciate your enthusiasm about this item. So thank you for that. I just have a few questions. So one, the compost pails. Thank you to PSDs and staff for hearing that and including those in the discussion. So can you explain a little bit more? So it's for anyone who requests them? What does that process look like? What is education to residents to know? I know I raised this because really it sounds like the our success in SB 1383 and ensuring that people in our city is successful in green waste and making sure that is diverted really relies on residents participating. And so I think, you know, I had to I bought my own kitchen compost pail. I know other providers dropped one off for every single resident who's participating in the program. A lot of cities have instructions on those compost pails that say what to do with it and all of that, and what can be included and what can't. So can you just explain a little bit about how that request process works, how residents residents will be notified, and the education around that? Because this is a big change for our residents, many of whom who've never composted before or been able to use green waste bins. And so this seems like a monumental effort. And so even if we're even if we were to drop off compost pails to every single user, it seems like we might not actually get to our end goal of people doing it right or actually doing it at all.
Sure. So in terms of how people would go about getting the pails, so Palm Springs Disposal, I think upon, you know, the council's decision on the proposal, would then go about ordering pails and bringing them in, but can start taking resident names, you know, as soon as as soon as a proposal is approved, to get that list built out for people who would then be receiving the pail. I think they they're shying away from doing a full distribution because many people at this point have purchased their own pails. So being able to distribute those, most of the pails that we've looked at do have an informational label on them. I can't speak to I don't know if they've made a final decision on which ones they're going to get. That's something we can definitely encourage them to do. And then I think the the game plan would be to leverage PSDs's environmental team. So they have a number of ambassadors who work with residents, with businesses. They go to HOA meetings. We're at 1PS every month. So really kind of trying to flood the zone a little bit and just demonstrate more and more. I think we're going to we're continuing to work to kind of reach the middle of people. So I think we hear a lot from people who really hate it. We hear a lot from people who really like it, but the middle is kind of who's harder to find. And I know PSDs's team has been really focusing on multifamily and places with shared waste collection centers, because those are a little bit tougher because it's a little bit more diffuse. You know, if you're if you've got if you're the only person using your green waste bin, it's pretty easy to tell, oh, that person's not using the green waste bin, let me drop them a flyer. Whereas if it's a, you know, multiple people using that space, it's a little bit harder for us to know who's excited and who might need a little bit more education. So but I think bringing those pails along will help them make that conversation even easier because it's a nice little leave behind.
Thank you. And then this is a franchise agreement, so it's separate. And I mean, it helps us implement our 1383 goals because this is how we'll do that. But let's remind me, if you know, the reporting process and the check-in process to see where we are at and, you know, how much people are actually using this and, you know, transferring over and using the green waste or organic waste disposal services.
Sure. So you're you're correct that it is a monumental effort. We are asking people to change a very fundamental and personal behavior. People are really closely identified with how they handle their trash. So we're asking people to make a pretty big change. So there's a few different ways that we monitor and report this. So I will say CalRecycle is a very detail-oriented agency, which is, you know, sometimes you're like, wow, you really ask a lot of questions, but it's actually very helpful when you're trying to implement something new because they do provide a lot of support and guidance. We have an annual reporting process to CalRecycle, which takes place in the fall. We have to submit an electronic annual report where we submit tonnage numbers, the number of outreach events that we did, the number of violations issued. All of those things get compiled on an annual basis. And then in terms of monitoring how the program is going on a day-to-day basis, Palm Springs Disposal is required to conduct a number of random audits of routes during the year. They, you know, people can reach out and either suggest or request also a mock audit if they would like, if they want to know a little bit more about, like, hey, how close are we to the mark? We've seen a few HOAs and multifamily complexes request these, and it's been helpful. They also have their ambassadors who go out to businesses and can kind of go through those with businesses. But this is the first year of official enforcement under SB 1383. So those route reviews and audits go through, they sample, you know, trash from a few different containers. They really what they're looking for is, as opposed to necessarily how full is your green bin, they're looking to make sure there's no food waste and yard waste in your regular trash bin. They're looking to make sure there's no aluminum cans and clean cardboard in your trash bin. You know, you'd be surprised how much like edible food. That's the thing that I see in the audits. There's a lot of edible food that still ends up in the trash bin, which is kind of a separate conversation. But so they're they're going through and doing, I want to say, they have to do four route review cycles a year, I believe. And so those yield, you know, informational notices last year and this year, those will sort of move down a kind of like a three-strikes path, for lack of a better term. Really, we want people to to do it right. We want to help people figure it out. A lot of people respond really well to those audits because it provides really tangible information. But we may still have some people who are receiving fines a little bit later this year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Middleton?
LP, question. As I understand it, under this extension of the contract, we will also be extending to multifamily homes for the first time the ability to do bulk pickup from their homes. So that's going to be?
Yes. And that's the on-demand bulk pickup. So that's four times a year per resident. They'd be able to call PSDs for a free bulky item pickup, correct?
And I'll repeat a request that I know you've already heard. I think it would be very helpful for Palm Springs Disposal to advertise across the city what that policy is. I'm probably the only one in the city who didn't understand it correctly, but there might be one or two other folks.
That's actually not true. I get a lot of questions about it. So, yeah, we'll definitely make sure that goes in the newsletters. We'll make sure to talk about that at 1PS, and and we'll get that out in our communications.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
LP, yeah, thanks for your work on this. And I think there were five or six very important words in your presentation and out of the 154 pages of the staff report. How does this affect the resident? What's going to happen to their bill?
Good question. So nothing different will happen to the bill. So we currently in the existing franchise agreement that was approved last year, we have an annual rate adjustment process. It's roughly pegged to the Consumer Price Index that takes into account the the fees that we have to pay when we drop the trash off at the trash destination, you know, any major changes to, you know, inflation metrics and things like that. That's in in one of those 134 pages of the staff report, but would happy to be happy to follow up with you a little bit more on that formula if you'd prefer. But that formula and that that process doesn't change, and there will be no impacts to that.
No, that's great. I just wanted to reemphasize that because six words went over really fast, and I want to make sure the community understands that.
Sure.
Are these audits, do they occur at multifamily housing units also?
They do. And so the route reviews are roughly randomly assorted. So the the audits will be occurring at multifamily developments as well.
We haven't done them, but we're going to start doing them?
I believe some of the audits have taken place at multifamily. Chris, I don't know. Yes, okay, yeah. Yes, we have taken a few at multifamily.
Excellent. I don't have any other questions, just some comments when we get there. Okay. So thank you. I know we sat down several months ago as you were starting to work on this with the city manager, and the conversation came up about including the bulk pickup at HOAs and multifamily. So I really appreciate PS, Palm Springs Disposal, on on working with you all and incorporating that into this agreement as as we move forward. And also just hats off to Palm Springs Disposal on their their work with the community when challenges and problems pop up. You know, we had somebody talk at council some time ago, and he had a challenge. Palm Springs Disposal followed up with him, took care of that. And we also heard comments last year about how vacation rentals that were that are also home shares were required to have walk-up service pickup. And I think, you know, between Palm Springs Disposal and staff, you know, that has been that requirement is no longer there. And I appreciate the fact that Palm Springs Disposal has been so helpful and proactive in in some of these items. So thank you.
Okay. So and I want to echo Mayor Protem DeHart's comments about Palm Springs Disposal, and they have responded to every request that that has come up, at least since I've been here. But I do want to ask, when was the last time disposal service went out to bid?
Sure. And I so I have only been here for about a year and a half. So it hasn't been since I've been here. So I might defer to our one of our deputy city managers or city manager. It's been it's been a little while.
Yes, it has been a long while. One of the things I will say is when we were discussing the amendment to incorporate the SB 1383 requirements in September of 2022, it was quite clear that the direction of council was that when this agreement expires, that we will go out to bid. And so we do have that as our direction from the city council, that when it does come up again, it will go out to bid.
After this next potential extension?
Correct.
Okay. And 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 Palm Springs Disposal only serves Palm Springs?
No, they also service Desert Hot Springs as well.
Okay. So is this equipment that they're getting for our extension, are they also getting it for Desert Hot Springs?
I might defer to Palm Springs Disposal potentially to answer that question. Just I want to make sure I get it correct in terms of where the trucks live.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council staff, and members of the public. Yeah, so Desert Hot Springs, we're on 12-year right now, so we don't have that issue with it with equipment. So we're able to amortize and finance the equipment that we need as we go along because the same thing's happening there. Lead times are up to three years now. But at the same time, having having 12 years to work on that, we're able to get the equipment that we need without things breaking down, spares working, because our material, just like here, the material is growing, spares are being used. The one thing I will mention because I should is that we purchased equipment about a year before, a little over a year before we started the program in anticipation of 1383. So here we are, two and a half years later, and we just reserved received a third truck about two, three weeks ago. So this is the issue that we have. But if we have, and that's what makes terms so important to us. And this, we just did not anticipate three-year wait wait times on.
So this is happening in other cities?
Oh, yeah. This is happening all across all across the industry.
And they're getting extensions. Okay. Well, as long as you're here, some other questions. So the the eight individuals for six-month periods from the navigation, I know LP answered, but in the staff report just says that. Is that per year?
Yeah, so that's four individuals every six months. So we work with staff members. I think we spoke with Chief Mills, and we spoke to a staff member, Jay Verata. They kind of gave us some direction and helped us out there. But four individuals every six months.
And that's throughout the term of the contract?
That's throughout. That's throughout the term, yes.
And then potentially, they have an opportunity for full-time employment?
Absolutely, yes. And we hope to inspire other business to maybe start their own programs. And when we have vacancies, yes.
Okay. No, I think it's terrific. I think we should look at other businesses following this. I also just want to talk about, because it says in here, the shredding is going to be free to the city.
It is.
I just want to confirm it's free to the resident as well?
It is free to the resident, free to the city, yes. This is something that we do in Desert Hot Springs, too, so it's kind of in our wheelhouse. So we thought that would be a good good thing to do.
Okay. And the kitchen pails, I know there's different ways, but they will be delivered to somebody who can't get it at an HOA or or a community?
Yes, absolutely. Anyone that requests is whether it's an HOA, whether it's a unit. The reason we wanted to wait for a request is, you know, also, we have a lot of gated places out there. So we didn't want to just drop carts or, I'm sorry, pails just to keep alone down the street. So, yeah, we'll make sure they get a pail wherever we need to drop it at, whether it's right at their front door or wherever they'd like.
Okay, terrific. I have another question, a few oddball questions, if you don't mind, because these have come up in different discussions. So plastic bag recycling, is there any opportunity that it will happen other than at the few supermarkets that you have to search for the place to put them?
You know, that's that is a good question. And, you know, let me look into that a little bit more because that's a tough one. It's like batteries or something. It's a it's a tough one. I know the MRF stations don't like it because it gets gummed up in the equipment. It's not really recyclable, but it's, you know, but, yeah, I'll look into that.
They say not to put them in, but then it took me about a long time to find out that the supermarkets actually have a little teeny space you can put them in.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're right. Thank you. So there's actually only one recycling plant in the whole state that technically breaks down plastic bags. So even a lot of the ones that go to the stores unfortunately aren't getting fully recycled. I think the challenge that we're seeing kind of in this sector is the fact that we you almost see the thicker plastic bags as kind of like a loophole in the state's environmental plastic bag ban. The way I would kind of handle it is that it would, you know, we need to probably just reduce the use of those bags because there's really not an economic or environmentally safe way to to really, you know, reprocess those, unfortunately. There's just not enough material in the bag.
Okay. So speaking of not actually getting separated or commingled, so the comment I also had was from a lot of people that they think everything's just being commingled after they separate it. And some businesses actually said that as well. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. Are you referring to to all trash and recycle being mixed together?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. That shouldn't occur. I mean, if that's happening somewhere, then then we need to know about it. Now, we do have cameras on the truck, so if there is an issue somewhere, we can look back at the camera and see if that's the case. I don't think that's the case. There's a couple things should be aware of. One is, we have several systems of collection. One's a rear loader, all right? And some of those rear loaders have split bodies on them. So they have two compactors on one split load truck. So you have recycling one side or green waste on the other. So now that we have three streams, these trucks are going around, they're picking up two different things that could look like it, but there's it's a one body, but it's got to split down the middle with two compactors in it.
That's that's great information because I didn't know that. I think that's probably leads to a lot of it.
Oh, we knew that was gonna that. Yeah, we get the calls. But if a front loader, you know, if it's a big dumpster, that could be a possibility that it's contaminated. And usually, we know first. We don't pick it up unless we've been called or it's been reported that that it's contaminated. We usually call the customer and let them know that, hey, it's contaminated. What would you like to do? Empty it out or or pick it up as trash? So let me see that, too.
Thank you. The other the other question that came up was the organic waste at at restaurants and other commercial places where they're seeming to have trouble. It's either too small, or if it's too big, it's not picked up frequently enough and starts smelling.
Yeah. Yeah, that one, yeah, we're still figuring that one out. Yeah, the small carts, they're kind of easy to maneuver around, but they get really heavy depending on the type of material that's in there. You can get a lot of real heavy food waste in there, and you're 150 pounds on a small one. So that's why we kind of tend to go with the small ones. Now, they can get the next size up at 65 and keep that weight just enough. But you start using the big 95-gallon containers, it's so heavy, and the carts are plastic. So we have a mechanism that kind of picks them up, but they break. So 65 is the highest we'll go with us because they just get too heavy. But, yeah, if they need to go several times a week, they can.
Okay. I'll follow up on that. And the last thing that just came up recently was some of the restaurants were saying that early in the morning, their trash is being picked up while they're serving breakfast. And they were asked if they could do it, get pickup earlier, and were told they couldn't do that. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a
That they you were not allowed to do that, is that?
Yeah. So so in residential areas, we're not allowed to do that. In commercial areas, we can. We can start at 6:00 AM. So we usually start at 6:00 AM, and we try to get our trucks in and out of there as fast as we can. But now we have three as we can, but now we have three different waste streams that we're picking up. So we try to get out as fast as possible in the morning, but there's, there's some that are lingering.
Okay. Because there are some that didn't realize it could be at 6:00, so I will make sure they know.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They should be down there at 6:00, 6:00 AM, they should start and get out of there as fast as possible.
Okay. I will make sure they know. And, and the other question I had was in, in organic recycling in parks, especially now that we're going to have street vending in parks.
Yes, Mayor Protem, are you speaking to, like, people dropping food waste in parks, or about green waste, like, from plants and trimmings in parks?
Well, plants and trimmings, I would assume, if it's gardens, that's being taken care of. I meant for people.
Yes, so that's something, I think, I've maybe mentioned to this group before, we're working on bringing on our own waste counterpart to PSDs. It's something that's on their list of projects to work with parks to make sure we get those bins. We also have a few parks where we need a little bit more recycling infrastructure too. So that's something we're going to try to look at in kind of one way, or in one go, and work with parks to make sure we're not accidentally creating places for animals to have a buffet, but also, you know, giving people the opportunity to dispose of that waste properly.
Okay.
So, forthcoming.
My other couple of things, and in the airport, are they having the same kind of organic waste and recycling separation?
Yes, so we actually have worked pretty extensively with the airport on this. So Liz from Palm Springs Disposal, who's the environmental lead over there, she and I went over, and we've been focusing on the back-of-house for restaurants first, because that's where you get a lot of stuff separated, but also it's usually pretty easy to get a clean stream. So making sure that that's being diverted properly, which they've made great progress on that. And I know the airport is in the process, if they may have already procured, I don't know if they're still here, their, their new three-stream, like, out in the open waste bins. So they're in the process of getting bins that will allow for that. They should already have those, I just haven't double-checked.
Okay. My other big beef is the deposit bottles, which, which I know this is not disposal, because they are recycling them, but the point is that people are paying a deposit, and it's almost impossible to find a place, there's one in the city, to get the deposit back.
Yep.
And there's other cities that require every supermarket or large dispo, place to take them back with machines. Has that ever been contemplated here?
So, yeah, so there's a state law that requires a certain density of places to redeem the bottles. Since we're such a small city, we kind of get away with just having the one. Other cities I've also seen where they may have more small places to redeem the bottles as opposed to one central one. It's something that we've been working with the different, you know, the, the recycling facility and the different supermarkets, et cetera, to advance, but hasn't been going super quickly. So that's something that we have on our, kind of our long list, but it's something we can redouble efforts on.
Okay. And the last thing I just want to mention, I know I brought up a commercial dumpster ordinance, which other cities have had, which relates to security and things, but also to recycling. So I've had several in my other life businesses that have warehouses where there's a cart for cardboard recycling, serving 13 warehouses, that fills up in the first hour.
Yeah, about 15 minutes, yeah.
And then everything else goes into the regular trash.
Sure.
So that is something that we should look at, requiring commercial places to have the appropriate space to have recycling. So, okay, those are my questions, thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Chris, one question. The 6:00 AM start, is that our rule, or is that a rule that's imposed from someone else?
No, it's just kind of typical in, in agreements, excuse me, they just want, so in the summertime here, they start at 6:00 AM in the, in the, in neighborhoods, but 7:00 AM during this time of the year. So Memorial Day, before Memorial Day, it's, it's 6:00 AM. So, but it's typical in agreements.
I don't know where anyone else would be, but when it comes to commercial work, I would certainly be open to an earlier start time, so as to allow folks to finish their work, and most particularly for us in the summer, if we, the earlier we can get your crew off, back home, the better.
True.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
See, when you keep asking questions, then I think of other questions to ask. Chris, not related to what we're approving today, or what's in front of us, where does the, what landfill does the waste go to?
The trash goes to Lamb's Canyon, and that's in Beaumont.
Okay, so county?
Goes to the county landfill, yeah. So this is just a transfer station up here at Edom Hill. It used to be.
So from that transfer station, does it still go into Riverside or Imperial County landfill?
It does.
We don't go into a tribal landfill?
No, no, not, not that I know of, no. I know everything, everything I know goes either, I know most of it goes to Beaumont, but some may go to Imperial too. But I, I'm not aware of anything going to any tribal.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Also brought up more questions. I just have a public education question probably for you. I noticed a lot of people are using bags in their compost, and then taking it out to the green waste bins, and compost can get, or green waste can get really moldy, et cetera, and so this seems like a solution, and people are selling plastic bags. So could you just tell us a little bit about how to properly use those bags, and just dump it in, and then maybe to city staff, maybe to you, like, what public education are we doing to notify our residents about the rules for composting, because every city is different? I know that, that's why I was very specific about the bins, because I know other residents receive pamphlet and information, like, we're switching to a new system, here's what you need to know, here's what you need to do, and I don't believe we've done that yet.
Yeah, so you're talking specifically about the bag requirement for food waste to go in the green waste container, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so this was, and it should have been on all the carts that we sent out. There was a lot of carts that were already out there, and they probably didn't get that, so, but yeah, because the system of compost we have out here in the Coachella Valley, it's a windrow type of composting, so they got to have the perfect mixture in order to get a 90-day turnaround and get compost. So if you just put food waste in the green waste, they can't get that mixture right. So that's why they asked that everyone puts it in a bag, preferably clear, so they can see it, and what they do is they separate all that, and they run that through what they call a Scott Thor processor, and that gets rid of the bags or any other stuff that can't be in there, and it's kind of a liquefied food waste after that. Then they can take an appropriate amount, put it with chip and grind green waste, then they can do their 90-day turnaround. But it's essential that they do that, because we have the windrow system out here.
So we send, or you send flyers or cards to every single resident or user one time, is that right, about how to use it?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
You may have some.
And then I can talk about some of the other public education we've been working on. So, so, you know, we have a lot of different groups of residents. We have people who are here part-time, we have people who may not be the primary payer of their trash bill, you know, but whether that's their landlord, or their HOA board, or whoever. We have people who are in single-family homes, we have people in vacation rentals, any number of people in a surprisingly large number of groups for such a small place. But, so we've really been trying to think of all of the different ways that we can get this education out. We always appreciate more ideas or more opportunities to work together with other groups, to get to some of those audiences, or maybe even work with other trusted messengers who can help us get that message out. You know, I think one of our great ways of getting the word out has been through 1PS and the neighborhood organizations, so we've had some great advocates from the neighborhood organizations who've kind of become compost advocates, kind of like the each-one-teach-one theory. It's like, you know, I can only get to so many people, but if all those people then get to another person, that kind of makes progress. We're at the farmer's market every month, talking about composting. You know, Desert Compost also is, is out there helping to kind of spread the message as well, which is great, you know, leveraging the work of other community organizations. I know a really neat thing Liz and her team have recently done, they've made magnets for all the vacation rentals, so that those can be put up in the homes, because that was a question and a concern we were getting, both from owners, but also from neighbors of vacation rentals, saying like, how are you going to get to those folks? So, you know, really kind of thinking about how we can tailor our education to those different audiences, to make sure that we're, you know, reminding people of, of the things that can go in there. We do have information on the PSDs website, they send out a quarterly newsletter, though that goes primarily to bill payers. I know they've been working on getting that out to all residents as well, so you should be seeing that coming a little bit more widely soon, I think. And, you know, we love to talk about this, so happy to talk about it anywhere people will have us. We're doing a lot of annual meetings this month, I think.
Thank you, really appreciate that, and yeah, appreciate the extra effort to reach, you know, tenants and people who might not be paying those bills, might not be mailed to necessarily, et cetera. Really appreciate 1PS, they do amazing work, we're working on making sure they're always inclusive of apartments and other folks who might not be participating in those places. So thank you for all of that outreach.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, and a second by Councilmember Holstich. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Item 3C, which is a request to approve the scope of work for the Palm Springs Public Library, the Public Library renovation project 1608, main library renovations, and JC Frey Building rehabilitation project 1918, and provide direction for issuance of debt service. May we have a staff report, please?
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, staff. I'm Jeannie Kayes, library director, and I am here happily to present to you this staff report. We are asking you to approve the scope of work for the project, and to talk about the process of debt service. I would like to start out real quickly with a little mini-history of how we got here. So, because even I wasn't here when my history starts. So as you know, the library's built in 1975, and I'll jump ahead. 2006, there was a proposed renovation that was prevented, presented to council, there was no funding, and the economy tanked at that time. I don't know if you remember that, I do. 2013, we did a renovation proposal, and with Group Four, actually, and no funding. So that, that came to a stop. In 2018, there was a thought, why don't we build new? Let's build a new library, or explore the option. So we actually, Councilmember Middleton and others formed a building committee, we hired consultants, and we looked at four different locations around town to decide, should we move to a new location? There was a proposed location on the north end, I think now it's ALO, senior housing going to be there, the downtown area, out on Dyna Shore, on tribal land, and then Sunrise Park. All the different locations, and overwhelmingly, I mean overwhelmingly, the community said it needs to stay at Sunrise Park. And then we were going to talk about whether we should build a new library or renovate, but then the pandemic happened. And so we did not make any decisions on that at that time, but we did say Sunrise Park was the place to be. And so then recently, we received this opportunity to apply for an infrastructure grant, as you all know, and we received $6.5 million for a renovation, and that really made the determination about what should happen to this library. So that's where we are now. We are, we just completed the first portion of the project, which was gathering data, cost analysis, and community input. Just real briefly, and I'll turn it over to my architect, David Schne, from Group Four Architecture Research and Planning, to talk more, give a presentation and talk more about our findings. But real briefly, we decided, it was suggested that we should maybe have a cafe. Cafes and libraries are just not feasible, so it was scratched. I just want upfront quickly, no cafe. An event center has been proposed, and it is extremely a well-loved part of this project, but we think that that could come at a future phase with fundraising from our foundation and our friends at the library. So I wanted to be real clear with you upfront on that, and then I am going to turn it over to David Schne to give our presentation. And do you have a clicker? It's right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, esteemed council members, staff. It's a privilege to be before you again. My name is David Schne, principal in charge of the Group Four Architecture Team, and I want to really thank the project management team, which include library director Kayes and city engineer Montalvo, and also the city manager, assistant city manager, were key guiding members through this first phase of the project. Our agenda today is to briefly do some introductions, describe what we've done over this first phase of the project, and talk, excuse me, about all three of the main project components. And then, of course, finish up with talking about how much it will cost, and leave it to you for exploring the funding. So, excuse me, Group Four is a firm based in South San Francisco, we're approaching our 50th year. We specialize in public sector architecture almost exclusively, with a dedication to environmental and social justice through design. We have had the great privilege of designing over, or planning over 500 libraries across the country, and just feel very fortunate to be doing that type of work. Other members of our team include various principals that you'll see presented later phases of the project, and we have historic resource consultants, ARG, and Rios Landscape, who worked on the award-winning city park. So Group Four, we're a lovely team. Out of all that library work, we've created a subdivision called Library Forward, helping communities like Palm Springs move their library visions forward. As library director Kayes mentioned, we were here in 2013, got to know your library building well, worked with you, worked with the board, worked with the community, teen forums, opened houses, and really saw the need, the need was there, the vision for renewing the library was strong. Of course, where was the funding? Now we have the funding, we applaud you for that very competitive grant, we've worked with other communities who have those grants. Teeny bit about Group Four, so in our library work, I want to highlight three themes, renewing historic or traditional buildings. This is the Palo Alto Rinconada Library, where we added an event center to it, state award-winning project, has wonderful indoor-outdoor connections, and the event center has a great opportunity here in Palm Springs for similar. We consider Palm Springs in our backyard, we've done work in Palm Desert, in Coachella, in, this is in Yorba Linda in Orange County, which is a library and cultural arts center, shows other communities making major investments in libraries here, and how important and flexible children's spaces are. A third theme, and final theme on just a little bit about Group Four, is how do you sort of improve the curb appeal of existing projects? This is a Olathe, Kansas, library that was a conversion of a Hy-Vee supermarket, and it went from this to this, where we were celebrating cottonwood trees. The metaphor was the leaves of the tree, other people see in this new solar facade pages of books, those pages continue into the ceiling and bringing in light and flexibility in spaces. So there's really just a world of opportunities of some of our experience that we can bring to you. So what is it that we're doing for you? The project has three main components, as I said, located in Sunrise Park. We have your main library as the main focus, we have the JC Frey Building, and we have the Future Event Center, planning for all three of those. The project's schedule is designed, and we have to be staying on track and on schedule. We finished this first task on schedule, but we have, and we have to keep on working diligently, so that we meet the deadline for the tremendous state grant that's the catalyst for this phase. So let's jump into the, the big dog, the main library. So the primary goal is to seamlessly update and modernize the building systems. Why? To support 21st century library service. The members of the Board of Trustees, the foundation, the friends, really spoke eloquently. I speak around the country on similar topics, I won't repeat all of what they said, but I think they really did a beautiful job talking about that. So a few aspects of that, the library is, and I like, Mr. Mayor, that you talk about this being an arts and culture city, the library is here specifically a key player in that, being an anchor and a partner in that. And as many of the comments talked about, the library is a great equalizer, it's open to all, it doesn't, you don't have to pay anything to enter it, and it's for people both with a lot of means and people who don't have other resources to come to the library. We recognize the community's past, including indigenous traditions and history here as well, and the, we recognize the diverse residents who use it, including tourists. And of course, being located in a park, probably a quarter of our library projects are in parks, and, and celebrating that resource and other public amenities there is important. So I love your library, I'd say the majority of people I've interacted with in the community love your library. Not everybody has appreciated all of it, and I wanted to share that in 1975, William Cody designed this library, esteemed architect with many Palm Springs projects, and I just want to- projects. And I just want to remind people about the beauty of it, which is blends into the desert. It's low-form sloped walls on the outside, it's natural colors. You come in through a shaded entry, and what do you enter into? An oasis inside, a higher lit, dappled light coming in with water and plants and flexible spaces. The nature of the design back in seventy five is really great, has, building has good bones. It lends itself well for continued use and renovation, big flexible central space, four wings that we can continue to use. So, it really is a lovely project that, an existing building that we want to enhance. So, what has changed since nineteen seventy five so much? In addition to platform shoes and disco, of course, all of this technology has changed, and the library is, as Director Kayes mentioned and members of the board, that is always evolving to new technologies, new services, new community needs, and has done that very well. So, seventy five, nineteen seventy five, nearing fifty years, that infrastructure is almost original. The building could be a movie set for something in the past. Its infrastructure needs to be fundamentally upgraded, all building systems. This is an illustration of the sort of seismic structural upgrades we need. The building codes have become much more stringent over the years. The building is good and safe, but it should be upgraded, and that is for, including increasing connections to the foundations as well. The exterior precast concrete panels that are part of its signature design seem lovely, and from a distance, you don't come up to it. And after nearly fifty years of protecting the interior from the scorching sun, there are lots and lots of cracks and caulking that needs to be significantly repaired. Restrooms are non-code compliant to current codes and are undersized and are needing to be fully replaced, and the piping all the way out to the street will have to be replaced as well. The piping is not good. And as part of this work, we've identified hazardous materials that need to be abated when we do the work. And of course, the technology is part of that. Well, that talks about the nuts and bolts that the grant is funding, but part of this first phase of work was reaching out into the community to hear what's their vision. As I said, a decade ago, we heard a lot from the community. We did it again, heard again from a thousand-plus people. People are really enthusiastic about the library. No one's saying, oh, do we have a library? Maybe one or two, but people are saying, this is what I want for the library here. We engage people in English. We engage them in Spanish. We did it online. We did it in person. We had a community open house, and we've had the great participation of the steering committee, and we've also presented to the friends and the foundation and the board as well. What is the library? It's so many things. We heard so many things there. We asked people what they are for the first nine on the left of this slide. We said, absolutely, they're all going to be there, and the library will have all of these things, but we really want to get people's input on the seventeen opportunities and activities and programs that are on the right side here to see what, how do we make this library uniquely Palm Springs and uniquely fit the community? And these five were the top go-getters, or top and most important requests and priorities from the community. The first is celebrating culture and history. The second is celebrating languages. The third is arts and crafts, and the cafe is on there as well. People want to be able to enjoy food. They can take their book at home and enjoy it with a cup of coffee, and we do agree, we have had some successful cafes in much, much larger libraries, and, but for this scale, it usually is economically unfeasible for that. And so, this is the aggregated data for all ages. When we look at just young adults, we hear that, and that homework help programs and outdoor classrooms are important. And when we ask the children, who we separated out at the kiosks, and we had an open pop-up at Halloween event, and had tons of families, a lot of Spanish speakers and young children, and someone said, well, you have things to reach up on those boards. Can you reach them? Like, could kids reach them? And they could see them. They have good, better eyesight than me, and their parents were holding, put their dot up there, and we kept their choices identified separately in yellow dots. And what is number one for them? Children. And indeed, across the nation, children's spaces are important and are almost the number one driver of, in the library, and we'll be making major improvements to that as well. And gaming as well, which is good for all ages. So, we take all of this input and we develop a library program. We have a spreadsheet with accounts of how many books, how many chairs, and technology, but what we really are designing are experiences here, browsing, learning, exploring, discovering. And so, we translate all of those needs into this space program, and then it turns into a redone floor plan. The building, as I said, is good bones. It flows well. You'll see more of the collections and new books displays and other things in the browsing area right as you come in. The adult area continues to fill the central space with a reconstructed Koi Pond there, beloved by so many, in the main adult area. The current teen area and computer area will become an expanded children's area. That's on the upper left. The current children's area becomes an expanded meeting area. Some of the staff areas get relocated to become a teen area as well. So, a couple of very preliminary views for those who saw it at the board. We had shown images from ten years ago at the board meeting. These are fresh off the presses here that show how that oasis-like character, we're looking back towards the front entry, and point out where those words "study" are showing that one of the things that's really missing of contemporary library service are group study rooms. We'll have four of those, and an extra room for passport services, and another one for community partners to come in and be able to use services. We haven't shown all of the book stacks here. The collections will be adequately and generously displayed here. We removed some of them for the view of the rendering. And here is coming in, looking from the entry back in towards the children in the back, seeing some of those enclosed study rooms to the right, and the new teen area to the right. And just off the picture, sorry, our friends here is the friend store that's here. And I want to make sure that we understand that the spaces in the J.C. Frey Building, which I'll be getting to in a moment, if they are not in that building, then we, we've run out of room. Like, where will they go in this building? What of what we're proposing to respond to the community requests would happen? So, it's been an essential aspect of the overall programming for it. So, the next aspect, going from inside to outside, is talking about the site upgrades. As I'm sure you're aware, the north side of the building has been subject to periodic flooding and winter storm events. The images on the right are from Rios Landscape doing temperature and heat imaging, so we know how hot it can be, and this is a year-round facility that needs to be improved. As part of the grant, there was not any landscaping improvement funded, so that's part of the main ask, is to upgrade the landscape, and they provided a number of early inspirations that if funded, they will continue to work with, will continue to work with the stakeholders of this and staff to develop landscape schemes that really work with the existing architecture and have much better water usage, provide more shade, and it's more in keeping with desert landscapes. So, Rios has some wonderful desert-modern-inspired landscape, early inspirations that we hope to have the opportunity to develop further, and seeing how these little teasers of images here for that. And so, of course, we heard in the workshops that people find at busy events, it's a park, there's activities at the ballpark and others, that the library is always careful to not schedule events at the exact same time, but expanding the parking is one of the things that we have included in our budget moving forward. Okay, the J.C. Frey Building, which I used to call the Frey Building, and been corrected many times, the Frey Building. And so, this is just an important resource. It's not central in most people's minds. The friends use it, foundation office being proposed for it, and expansion of the archive. The archive space is something that's there, and as the comments were, this building, I'm surprised anyone can use it and hasn't been red-tagged for it. It really needs to have a comprehensive redo, and that is in our current scope. There is fundamentally a large economy of scale of doing the Frey Building and the main building together with the design services, the engineering services, and the construction management services, and the construction services. Treating that as a small standalone project, the costs would be significantly higher, so something to consider as part of that. And there are full infrastructure upgrades that we need to do there, and there are hazardous materials and that that also need to be abated, so important part. So, the event center is something that is a very popular 21st-century feature of libraries, especially in an arts and culture community. The picture of the Yorba Linda Library and Cultural Arts Center had a big black box theater in there. We have designed big flexible event spaces in many libraries around the country. We really support this as something that would enhance the building. The existing building is not nearly large enough to keep our design and costs appropriate. We are not demolishing main walls inside the existing library to try to squeeze in a bigger events space, and I don't think they're good bones for library uses in what we're proposing, but not really good bones to make an event center within the space, and it would push out too much. So, we'll show you some images. This is a library and event center in Cuyahoga County in Ohio. That is just an early design now. This county library system has two of these. This is their east county version of one that, similar with a flexible retractable seating, similar to what we did in Yorba Linda stage, and looking back from the audience out, we can imagine having large windows here and seeing the mountains here being special. Of course, everything in Palm Springs in season has indoor-outdoor connections, and part of this event space will be designing plazas between the library and the new event center as well. And just some images of how this would go. We looked at a very preliminary basis. Our scope was only to sort of scope it and check interest and start getting inspirations and to do a preliminary budget. Being on the north side of the building seems like the most appropriate space, not to interfere with parking or interfere with the views of the library. And so, they're, the foundation is very committed to creating and funding an iconic addition to the building that will complement and prove the street curb appeal of the library as well. And so, we've looked at that, and these were some of the early images that we've shared, imagining a desert slot canyon as a way to have something iconic here. This is all something that we would work out in separate work processes, potentially with the foundation and city at the appropriate time that funding's available for such a study, and then to move forward. So, save the best for last, what it costs. Of course, over these decades, the costs continue to go up, and unfortunately, we've built into our cost model escalation as well. The two main components, the J.C. Frey Building is approximately two point two million. There's one, over one million dollar gap there. The main library building is approximately, my problem's reading from here, forty-five million dollar total project, total project budget. When you combine the two buildings, forty to forty-five million is what we have a strong confidence in, being what will it take to deliver this project. Again, great credit to you for your leadership in getting the fifteen million from grant and city matching funds and Measure J, and so, the gap between you is between this approximately twenty-five to thirty million to be able to deliver this full project. We had prepared a budget as well that could be as much as twenty-two million for the event center. A lesser one or more expensive could be done as well, and that is not included in that previous slide and that total. So, the final next steps here from our presentation, and we'll turn it over to you, is today, your work. We're going to NTP, Notice to Proceed, with a grant-funded scope, and we'd like, if authorized, we'll try to keep all of the rest of the improvements to go simultaneously. The other work does not. We explored, could this other enhanced work be staged and done later? When your building is shut down, all of this work is really one comprehensive work. You can't do technology infrastructure later. You can't do the interior finishes later. Like, it all should be done at one comprehensive project to get the best value, least disruption services. And so, that concludes our presentation, and we're, we're still looking at our schedule moving forward. So, thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to open up with a couple of questions. That's okay. So, first of all, I looked at your, the libraries you've done, and they're terrific, and it's really, you certainly have a lot of experience in this, so it's, it's great comfort to know that. I want to ask a couple of questions on a community input. How many community meetings did we have?
So, we had one open house at the library, and we had two pop-up events held up there, and then we had two steering committee meetings, and then presentations to the Board of Trustees, and the friends of the library, and the foundation.
Okay. So, we just, the, the community open house, we had that one on that Wednesday afternoon in October, is that right?
That is right.
Okay. And did we work with, talk to the, was the Mizell and the Boys and Girls Club part of the input?
I would say that everyone, of course, we really worked hard to promote the information to everybody. We didn't specifically reach out to them, but I am part of a, a group of partners, if you will. We, we all do, meet regularly and, and talk, but specifically, we didn't do outreach programs with those groups.
And how about the College of the Desert and the school district?
No.
Okay. And, and did we look at how the rest of Sunrise Park and the pavilion fits into the whole landscaping?
We did indeed. So, Rios has taken a comprehensive park-wide perspective. We're, we understand that the park master planning process is something that we will, if the landscape work is included in the ongoing scope and is funded, then we will interface with the park master planning process going forward. But definitely looking at the circulation, there are lots of ideas about how to improve auto-circulation and connections between the community center and other buildings on, in and around the park.
Okay. So, I mean, I have a few, I have some more questions, and I'm going to open up to council, but I want to make a couple of general comments in this and that, and I appreciate all the work of the foundation and the trustees and the friends of the library who are, it's great to have so many champions of a library in our town. And I think if council, you know, wants to move forward, we have to realize that we're looking at a library that we, is our major public, free public use space that we have in our city, and, and we have to look fifty years ahead. So, this is not so much what, what I want or what the friends want. It's not even what, what councilmember Holstich's son is going to want, it's what, what the grandchildren are going to want. This is going to be in the year 2050, 2060, people are going to be using this library. And I think we have to have that kind of vision that we have had with other of our projects, that this is not solving what do we want to see, it's what do we want to see in the future. And you had that great slide on, on technology, and it is, there's been ten degrees of upgrades since the last one you put in. I mean, AI has just, in a year, has changed everything now, and, and this is going to be exponentially going forward that we're going to see. And, and what I really, you know, I think the role of librarians is going to change. You're not, you're not, you're not helping people to search for information, you got to, you're helping them navigate discovery technology and, and community and meeting places, as you've put into your presentation, are, are so key, and, and the libraries become content creators and teachers and, and event coordinators and, and a lot of the stuff that you're already doing, but it's going to keep changing. But, my one thought in all of this, this is the first time we're seeing this presentation, which means it's the first time the public is seeing this presentation for this major project in our city. And I, and I know you have a timeline, and I'm not quite sure how we're going to do this, but with every major project our city's worked on, there's been extensive public thing at each stage. So, obviously, we've had a lot of input up to date, and over the last fifteen years, people have been saying what they want to see and, and all of this, but it would be, what we want to have is input on these thoughts and these ideas and what has come, so that everybody buys in. And if you look at what the city has done prior to me here with the districting, or with the downtown park, or the downtown revitalization, or the navigation center, many community meetings. And not everybody agrees with what the outcome is of the decisions, but nobody can say they didn't see what the vision is. I mean, even the Plaza Theater, they had fifty community meetings explaining what their vision is, and this is, to me, is probably the most important of, well, I shouldn't say that. There's a lot of important things. This is one of the most important things, just for me personally, and what I think our city is going to get. And I, and I think we have to figure out with And I think we have to figure out without, if the council wants to move forward, without messing up this timeline, how do we get, take this presentation and have more town meetings to get other input, to make sure we talk to the Boys and Girls Club and the Mizell and the College of the Desert, which are all there. I mean, we're going to have this great campus and the school right there, and so that everybody understands clearly what the vision is that we're going to invest all this money into. So that's sort of my overview. And my only other question before I let everyone goes is, how confident are you in these numbers?
So our work is almost exclusively in public sector bid in communities that have PLAs and other similar criteria that you have here. We have a high degree of confidence. We put in a lot of contingencies. We worked with your city engineer very, very closely to do comprehensive. This budget does not include the books, but does just about everything else.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have some more, but I'm going to open it up to council. Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Mayor. This is, through also a lot of my questions. One of the things that stood out to me was just that I didn't see a demographic breakdown at all of who participated in this survey. And it also led me to think that we weren't necessarily talking to the people that we most need to talk to, because I noticed that virtual immersive reality stuff wasn't listed there as something that's important. Gaming, VR, audio video creator labs, none of those things were listed, and those are the things that our schools are doing primarily. So our kids are working on those types of projects. When you talk to about, go to visit our schools, esports is like the number one thing that they're talking about and doing. And so I think, just as the mayor said, we have to be thinking about the future of our city. And we, I think traditionally, have a lot of folks who are much, much older, who participate most frequently. And the library, as it exists right now, serves them a lot better than it serves the younger generation. And so we're looking at, you know, how does it serve everyone right now? And how does it also serve the folks that are to come? And how do we make sure that this infrastructure needs are also things that we can modernize as time goes on? I think that's one thing that when you talk to our wonderful library director, is that there's basic infrastructure that we lack that makes it difficult for us to bring the library into the 21st century. There's not enough outlets, for instance, right? So how do we, what I'm most interested in in terms of the infrastructure is, what are you proposing or how do you propose to make sure that in 10 years from now, if there's some additional technological upgrade that needs to happen, that we can do that easily so that we're not doing a whole new library renovation because we didn't know that certain technology would be coming available? Because I know that there are plenty of proposals, right, that you can look at, that you can see what the next big thing likely will be, even though it's not here yet. So how do we plan for that type of thing?
Right. And just, those are wonderful comments. The, first about the detailed, the slide didn't have the detailed breakdown, but you're spot on with understanding what we're hearing in our analysis of the younger adults and kids. And so gaming and the VR aspects are part of that. And I think I went too quickly over it, but it's worth pointing out, just on the floor plan, that we have two wonderful creative maker spaces. We have a create and make spaces, which are brand-new, actual dedicated square footage to the library. The library's been using those activities, but this really gives the opportunity to, I'll get there in just a minute, sorry. There we go. So up on the top right, the teen maker space, what's, not just for teens, it's for others as well. And bottom right, the yellow create space, that's for media creation as well.
Great, okay. So those are things you're including, even though the survey didn't necessarily put those as?
They're in our analysis of the survey.
They're still in your analysis.
And at the total aggregated, I think you're right, the total, we actually pretty well matched the demographic. When you add in the in-person and the online, we just skew a little bit older, not terribly older. So we do have both of those, but we do have the data that reinforces exactly what you've said. And the future is, like, we're thinking 50 years on, and we're going to put in the most advanced type of cabling we have, and where possible, flexible cable trays and other ways to be able to change the infrastructure as new technologies come.
Thank you. Another question I had was just about ADA mobility issues generally. So I'm a very frequent library user, I'm there all the time. And one of the things I've noticed is that there's some folks with mobility issues, and the chairs, as they are in the library right now, are very low to the ground. And so it's hard for some people to sit down. So what are some of the, not just specifically what ADA requires, but what are some of the other things that you'll be doing to make sure people with different mobility issues are considered in this?
Right. That's a super important topic that you bring up. Inclusive design is central to our work and to our commitment to social justice through design. And so that means indeed, chairs for different-sized people, different heights, some with arms, others without arms. And so, and also being, we were, your library director and I were talking today about making sure the materials are good for a variety of uses and are durable and cleanable as well. And so doing that, having signage in English and Spanish there, having wider aisles so that people can navigate easier. The stacks from the 70s are too tall here, and so through modern libraries have more accessible shelving, which also makes it easier to browse and find your way around. And so those themes are absolutely central to the work and the design that's just starting here.
Great. Thank you so much. And then in terms of the planning meetings and the scope of work, is that, I mean, this is more for staff and library staff, planning, engineering, and anyone else that's involved, do you feel that these, there's been a sufficient number of meetings, that there will be a sufficient number of meetings? Because it didn't seem like there was that many that were happening. Just want your perspective on that.
I do understand. It did seem very rushed, but it was concentrated. And the benefit of having had so many starts and stops before is that we did have that data too, even though it's 10 years old. Those teenagers in those photos are adults now, you know, but the wishes of the community are often the same. They want comfortable places to go. They want nice seating. They want good technology. They want all those things. So we have that information. We have the expertise of our architects who have done, what'd you say, 500 library projects? So they know what the trends in libraries are. But also, we're not finished. So that, this next phase, it's not set in stone at this point on these designs, but this is the point where we can get that real good engagement when we get into the details of how it will look. And so that, it will come, and we can do that. We, as staff, can go out and meet with individual groups, give presentations to show and gather that input. Or if you want, we can also do more community input sessions, like you've mentioned. It's not finished.
Right, yeah.
So it can happen.
Thank you so much. And the other thing, in terms of the entrance, is there a proposal for a different entrance? Because I know there was an original entrance. Is that being considered? Are there multiple entrances? It wasn't really clear from the.
At this point, the plan is to keep the entrance where it is. On this plan on the screen, the red triangle on the right is the main entrance, and the plan is to keep that. If we do this plan, we would have after-hours access in those other two spaces, like for voting. That's a big deal, when after-hours voting, it's hard to get in the library. So we've got those, the south entrance and the north entrance would be more patio access. And probably, I don't, it's not finalized yet either, but at this point, it's planned to use it as more patio space. And, but we're open to ideas.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I grew up here. I grew up going to the library. I got my first library card when I was four years old. And so this is a very important place for me and I think for so many community members. And I really appreciate all of the board and trustee members that came out today to talk about the importance of the library. Thank you for continuing to advocate for our library and make sure people understand the importance of the library, not just for today, but for really forever. It's such a gem in any city, and we have to make sure that we keep them. Really looking forward to seeing how this project moves forward, and I definitely would like to see lots of outreach, maybe even signs in the library that are advertising this information, so folks can get involved and just share their feedback. One of the big questions that I've been asking people is, do you go to the library? And if they say no, why not? You know, that's a huge part, right? Who's not here and why are they not here? And how do we make sure that we're creating this library space that's available for everyone and that we want people across the community to come to the library, even if they haven't in the past? Thank you very much.
Councilmember Middleton?
Are we doing questions and comments or just simply our questions?
Questions and comments.
And comments, okay. All right. First, let me make just a couple of broad statements. The question of whether or not we are going to commit tens of millions of dollars to the rehabilitation of the library is done. We have made that commitment. So this is an issue as to how do we ensure that we spend the money properly and that we get what it is that we are hoping to receive? So I truly appreciate the importance of the library and the commitment of so many people to the library. That decision has been made. Now we are onto a very difficult and different decision. How do we ensure that we spend our money properly and we get a return on the investment that we are committed to making? So my first question is actually for the city manager. Specifically, what is it that we are, that is being recommended that we act on this evening? And what is it that we need to act on this evening?
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember, and to the full city council. As we've heard, we just finished the first phase of the design aspects of this project. And should council move forward today, we would be moving forward with a much more detailed design, set of features in scope for presumably the main library and then the Frye Building. And then, based on that work that will be done, and what I think the staff will be doing, is the next step would be to come back to you in the next meeting or within the next two meetings to get actual approval to move forward with this next phase of detailed design work for the library. Should you approve that design work, that would be the basis for all the work that would need to go into us preparing an RFP to go out to the construction community to actually do the work. So I would not anticipate that, similar to when you approved the construction contract for the Plaza Theater, I would expect that it's still probably four or five months away before we would ever get to that point. So a lot more work has to occur.
And the proposed event center then is not before us this evening?
It's not before us right now, and you've heard the comments from the architect and the librarian.
All right. Thank you. In your mind, as you look at a project of this nature, what are the kinds of project management resources that you can identify that we are going to need to ensure we stay on budget, on time, and stay within the scope of what is approved?
Yeah, absolutely critical as you think back to, and we have a very recent example with the Plaza Theater, and where we approved a project contract. We have our city staff engineer on staff, but we have engaged a specific project manager to manage that project on a regular basis. We're absolutely going to have to do this. This is a complicated project. It's a project with a lot of moving parts, and when you get into a project like this, you never know exactly what you're going to find. There's always surprises. But none of us here on staff are experts in project management and will certainly have to engage somebody to do that work, just as we've done with the Plaza Theater, just as we're going to have to do with our bridge, elevated bridge project and everything else.
And I think it's the number of different projects that we're engaged in right now that give all of us pause to make sure that we can, in fact, execute what it is that we're taking on, because we are taking on an enormous amount of work. And Joel and his team are pretty outstanding, but there's only so many of them and only so many hours in the day. All right. Let me make a couple of comments. Many of the comments that I'm going to make are prefaced by the fact that councilmember Holstidge and I participated in a number of meetings a few years ago, exploring the question as to where we should go with the library. And doing so really within the context of what Mayor Bernstein outlined. We were looking back at a library that had been built in 1975. We're coming upon next year the 50th anniversary of that building. If we do this every 50 years, there'll be few of us that'll be left in the retirement homes in 2075, when the city council is meeting to determine how we're going to improve upon the work that we decide to do today. One of the things that was most telling in the course of a number of different weeks was a comment by one of the committee members as to where should a library be located? And I remember very vividly, he said, "It should be a place that is close to where seniors tend to congregate. It should be a place close to where youth tend to congregate. If it can be in a public park, that's even better, because all kinds of folks come to public parks." And if there are recreation facilities nearby, that's another plus. There should be ample parking. It should be close to the center of town. It should be accessible to public transit." And then he concluded with the obvious statement, "We have all of that at the existing facility." But I'm going to express some disappointment. The executive director of the Boys and Girls Club was not consulted on this project and is not here tonight. The executive director of the Mizell Senior Center was not consulted and is not here tonight to testify as to how these plans are going to integrate with our facilities. If we are going to have an integrated Sunrise Park that takes advantage of all of the various different elements of Sunrise Park that are why we are choosing to make tens of millions of dollars in investment in that facility, they have got to be a part of the planning process from moment one, at every single step. Along with the recreation department, we have numerous recreation facilities that need to be a part of this project. When we look at the landscaping, and I'm glad that Mr. Rios is involved, I want to look at a landscaping plan that addresses the entire Sunrise Park, not one that is limited to the library area. So I'm going to support this, but we've got a lot of work to do. And I will support it to the extent that it is fully integrated with all of the different facilities within Sunrise Park. And we actually bring together everyone in a cooperative fashion. Lastly, let me say, we're not making a decision on an event center this evening. I will approach recommendations around an event center with a degree of skepticism. We currently have a huge investment in the Plaza Theater. We have, just a few blocks away, one of the most beautiful and We have just a few blocks away, one of the most beautiful and convention centers anywhere in the Western United States that we need to be taking advantage of. We have at the Palm Canyon Theater, more space. We need to have an assessment of what are the event needs within the city of Palm Springs? What are the existing facilities? And where best do we expand those event capacities? And when I look at Sunrise Park, the first place that I look for expansion is the pavilion that is woefully underused and has great potential and potential to be a facility that could be used by all of the different contingent parts of Sunrise Park. So thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you for the commitment to the library. We are going to make good on that commitment, but we've got to make sure that we do, in fact, build something that's going to work for 50 years.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to the members of the public and the board of trustees and friends of the library who spoke. Really appreciate the moving stories about the importance of our library. Thank you to my colleagues. I agree with everything that's been said. So we're, I'm fully committed and supportive of moving this forward. We've committed to building a library of the future. We have been working on this for many, many years. We intended a large-scale planning session with the community and we led that subcommittee to decide on a location. So my understanding is, so tonight we're approving the scope of work, which is primarily that when you go to the scope of work, it's phase one, which is the main library upgraded, upgrades, which is the grant-funded infrastructure items, correct? So that's the sprinkler systems and all those kind of HVAC and all those listed out there. Is that right?
It's that plus. It's the, the full renovation of the main library and the J.C. Frye Building.
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to ask is like, at what design phase are we at and what percent designed are we at?
We are at 25%. And this is the, do we proceed with the design of a comprehensive main and renovation, including site work, as well as I think the main decision before you, yes, proceed? And then as the city manager said, the method of funding that and then approving it with a funding strategy approved by you, then the contractor will...
Thank you, thank you. Because yes, I agree, we've had very little community conversation and council conversation about, you know, the overall plan and, you know, the input that we got from the community. And I'm used to seeing that in the staff report. So I have no information of what feedback you got from the survey, what those comments were. I really, you know, sometimes we do that. We do like a large city survey and we really look at what the comments are. We've done that for a few different projects. Usually we get a review it. And so then we have more of a sense of, is this, is this representative of our community? Is this what I'm hearing in these places, that type of work? And so I also had the question about the survey demographics, if it's comparable to the demographics of our city, if it's comparable to the current users of the library, what does that tell us? You know, making sure that we did outreach to all the different groups of users, parents of young children, you know, seniors, et cetera. So I completely agree that a lot more outreach is needed. And that's just because we do a lot of outreach and community conversations in the city, but we are also early in the design phase. So I have other comments, but I think that those could be done in later design phases, I believe. You know, I was really excited about outdoor space and rethinking the patios. And I got comments, I asked toddler parents and others, you know, what are you looking for outdoor space and use of, you know, having programs that could be outside and really having patio and real uses for that? And I'm, it went away, the screen. This is like in the Oscars where they're like, stop talking. They put the vote up. Everyone else got to talk without the music playing. Thank you. You know, anyway, so I just, I'm also really committed to finding a joint vision for the next few decades. And I believe that you will do that and you are very skilled and talented and your work speaks for itself. So I'm glad that you're on the team. I'm glad that we're doing that together. Agree about the Boys and Girls Clubs and the schools and just getting a lot more input because really children should be designing the future of this library because my son's three, he's going to be 53 in 50 years when, you know, they're doing this again, let's say. So, you know, we, my three-year-old cannot give good public comment other than renting DVDs when I don't have a DVD player at home. But, you know, really engaging students and youth voices because they know the future a lot better than, than us as adults and knowing what's going to be needed. Agree with the comprehensive Sunrise Park redesign and the site planning, making sure it's comprehensive. I actually thought we were going to sort of review the site plan. And so I was a little shocked, you know, we're, you know, I understand we're staying within the footprint of the building. You know, I also had questions about the entrance and the way it was originally designed to have an entrance. I had questions about retaining that parking lot, if that really truly is the best way to do that. I have concerns about expanding the parking lot into the park in a way that isn't comprehensive for Sunrise Park. So I was hoping to like think about site planning and, you know, citing of the overall, not that we're moving the building, but, you know, those sorts of details. So I just have a few questions. One, the UC, the, the use of the Frye Building, has that, have you considered other uses? How did you settle on this use? I appreciate the friends need space and you need space for that, but did you kind of comprehensively think about if that could also be a public space or a different use? Can you tell us, are we committing to that use right now or will there be opportunities to discuss that further in design, later design phases?
We did, we did look at that and the architects helped us with this when we, we evaluated all of the services and programs that we have at the library. And we currently have our archive inside our library. And it, because that's not a very publicly used space, it made a lot of sense for us to take that and put it into the Frye Building to get it out of the public space that, where we needed, we needed that public space the most. And as far as the friends of the library, that's how they currently use it. And it, if we don't give them that space, where would they work? And again, it, it makes sense, and you might have more information about this, but it just made sense to, to keep their space there. And the nice thing about this building is that it could be flexible. Where the friends have their book sale space, all of that could be on mobile shelving and then it could become a place for a book club or their meetings or any small lectures that they might, might want to hold on their own. So they're really a, a big asset to us and it, it makes sense to help them help us, I guess.
And all of those spaces in the Frye Building that showed in this diagram indeed are flexible when we think of the 50-year timeframe that you discussed. So it easily could evolve over time. Today, those are all spaces and those are sort of the ideal ones to go in a building that isn't adjacent. The question was asked, can we tear that down and expand the existing library, build a, a fifth wing or something else? And that would be, one, a little bit difficult technically in how it would fit on the site and work with the building, and it would be way, way costlier. So keeping this, renewing it has a, a strong logic to it. And the uses we have now proposed are sort of the optimal for smaller outbuilding on this campus.
And they're flex spaces. So in 10 years, if those uses change, we're really not committed to that. And then if the powers that be can change to the slide we were on with the floor plan, thank you, that would be great. Because what I am, and I feel like it's our job to push you a little bit to hear it, right? We're building the library of the future. You know, I'm hearing what we need now, which we have to both plan for what we need now and then also 10 and 20 years, which is really hard with this technology change, the rapidity of technology, technological change. So, and that's why I made a grumpy face when you talked about 10 years surveys 10 years ago. I think it's fundamentally changed. The world has changed a lot in that time. And technology has changed and libraries have changed. And so I find some of that information outdated. And again, I can't review which information was relied upon in the staff report to know, you know, how we got to here at this point. So are we approving this floor plan tonight and this, you know, this design layout? Or this as design opportunities? So this is just how you believe it should all fit in? Because I feel like I'm getting comments from folks about like indoor play places or more maker spaces or VR and technology. And so I'm not there yet.
Yeah, and I, I would say we're not there yet on this. We, we haven't fully designed it because we haven't gotten permission to go that far. So this would be what we would do next.
Great.
And one of the things that we really liked about this choice as far as putting the children's room where it is on this map is that it's adjacent to a courtyard. And that, that courtyard exists now, but it is not a nice courtyard.
No.
It's not a great, it's not a great place. It has terrible curb appeal. When you drive by, it's just a big wall.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be great to have that, where you could see through and see into that and have a, a nice place for families to go? And, and so that, those are things that we want to do and want to work on in the next step.
Great, thank you. And just to, I kind of asked folks that I know use the libraries a lot. We also have a local toddler book club because a lot of the local book clubs are during work hours and so working parents can't participate in a lot of the programming for young kids. And so I asked for feedback and what I heard was, I'm going to read it out loud because you considered other feedback as well, like really truly reimagining the spaces, like really rethinking what the library, not just looks like, but the services and the programming and like truly having a library for the future, not just, you know, what we have now, just a little prettier. Expanded collections, expanded rental opportunities, so like toys, equipment, hiking equipment, gear, you know, the ranch Mirage, just telescopes, like really expanded collections and uses. So that's why it's a little scary to look in the scope because you see like already those things listed out. And so wanting to make sure there's, this is still open for community input. Yeah, I heard for more children's programming, more flex spaces. I saw some cities are doing even like mobile programming for different types of community groups and different, you know, indoor/outdoor spaces. I already said outdoor classes. I saw indoor play places was listed as like the top eight, but not the top five in your little chart that you presented. But that's a significant need in the city and I know what the library has now. I spent a lot of time in the children's area and that's one of the only free indoor places when it's too hot to be outside or too cold, like six months of the year. So I feel like that's really important. Improved computer facilities, improved tech facilities, iPads, interactive tech spaces, things like that. So just to put that all on the record as you consider moving forward. And I strongly, strongly support this project. We've been committed to the library and making sure this happens. You've had champions on city council for making sure this library moves forward and moves forward quickly. And so thank you for your work and really looking forward to all the next phases, the next phases of community input. Because this is almost a first start of the conversation for the community. Many people don't even know that this is going on. So hopefully we'll get some good feedback and you'll have places where, in ways that people can give feedback now if they're just tuning in. But thank you. Looking forward to all the next, all the work to do on this.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Thank you. And a lot of, a lot of good suggestions and conversation taking place tonight and I appreciate that. So David, in, in the last 10 years, how many libraries has G4 opened up?
And here's probably a dozen or two.
How, as those were built, how did you incorporate 40 years down the road, the functionality of those buildings?
A great question. One is having as flexible architecture as you can. So often that means avoiding having more walls than you need to and taking down walls in select places. Having the most robust technology infrastructure that we have and ways to access, access that as well. So all of that is being fundamentally redone in your library. So we're making it as forward, future-proof as we can. And I think, as I said, the building has good bones. It adapts itself well. There are other reuse libraries that we're working on that really need, don't lend themselves for today, let alone another 50 years. And I think your building can continue to adapt well. And this is that generational one that's the theme of your fellow councilmembers talking about from the mayor here, that this is, should set us up for the next 50 years, but we'll have to, we don't know what's going to come in 10 years and so we have to just be ready to adapt for it.
Yeah. And with the community outreach that you clearly are hearing from council today that would like to see happen, how then do we incorporate that input into this scope and, and the, the plan is, as it's outlined today?
So one, community engagements in Group Four's DNA. And so, and it doesn't just happen once and it's not just a survey and then you forget it. And so just as Director Kay's mentioned, there is a lot of input that comes forward. We've been waiting for the green light to say, right now it was strictly plumbing and, and structure, not things, but we had, if we were given the permission by council to continue forward, what would we want? So we were just starting that discussion. So in, I think we would start right away in the design development phase now that we have sort of core revisit these interior strategies, which were developed collaboratively with staff, also using the steering committee as a sounding board. Those are pretty standard to do. So I think there's a lot more opportunities there. Coming back to council as well is very common when we're invited. And so, and meeting with the other partners, I hadn't heard that expression before, but taking the broader perspective, like this project is a, a community asset, citywide scale. So we don't have blinders on and as much as we can bring those voices intentionally and broad thinking, Rios's diagrams were very broad, looking at demographics as we all are and the climate and water usage. And so I think these are excellent opportunities we have, Mayor Protem, to have more input.
Okay, thank you. Now you, you made a comment during the presentation that made me go back and try to find some information that I had previously asked, and that was about the landscaping. And I thought I heard you say something about in, down the road, if landscaping, the budget's approved. So do we, I understood that we had money in the budget today for landscaping.
So the basic infrastructure grant-funded scope had, the only landscape we're doing is repairing the earth that we dig up for new utility service pipes. That's it. No courtyards, no landscaping, no parking improvements. So part of the comprehensive recommendation here is to include the site improvements that were shown. And if that opportunity is approved, then we'll begin the design process and collaborate.
So in the $39 million?
It is in that.
So where do I find it?
It's in under the site costs.
Oh, site costs. Site improvements?
Yep. Site preparation, site improvement.
Got it, got it, okay. All right, thank you for that. So I'm seeing $6 million in contingency on different contingency light items. Am I reading that right, about 6 million?
I haven't added up the different ones there, but that sounds, that sounds about right.
So what is the, below the bottom line? The expected range high, 45,300, and the expected range low, 37,300,000. and the expected range low, 37,400,000.
Yeah, so the target, we believe this project, based on our preliminary work here, is nominally $40 million here. That we believe is the target. There are always potentially additional unforeseen's here. We believe if that were to be set, there is an opportunity that we could value engineer this as we're going forward and perhaps come in a little under budget. But there are always, as we discover an existing building, as the city manager said, we have some contingencies for that. But when we started this process, we hadn't identified that the exterior had approximately $2 million thus far of repair work that was needed. That wasn't on our radar before, it's now in here. What else, as we go into design development, will we see? And so if you wanted to have an extra project contingency in here for the city, that is the higher number in there.
On top of the 6 million that we're already planning in the budget?
Right, that could be up to another 5 million in that.
Okay. So if we, okay. So thank you for that. It helps have a little better understanding. So as I understand it, we have, we have about $16 million currently funded toward the project, right?
Yes, 15.2.
Plus 870 Measure J, Frey Building?
I think that's in that.
It's included.
So the 2 million, is the 2,200,000 included in the 40 million up above?
Yeah, I think there's one number that's a mistake. The 45 million in the upper right here should be the 39.3 million.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what I'm getting to. So I, the numbers I previously had is we were at 40 million, and now we're looking at 40, that top line item.
And that's what you identified at the very bottom of the budget sheet is, it's that minus 5 to plus 15% is where that other 5 million could come from.
But the 2,200,000 is included in that 45?
Correct.
Okay, so we have 15,200,000 currently funded.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay. So we're looking for 39 million, or 37, 38 million, 39 million dollars, including the ancillary building, is where we're trying to get to right now, get to right now. And we already are funded at 15. So when we come back, city manager, we're going to be looking at financing for that difference. The 15,200,000 that's already funded and the projected 39 total cost that's figured.
Yes, that's correct, Councilman. And you'll notice that our finance director is sitting out in the audience along with Suzanne Harrell, our financial advisor. So we would be, besides coming back to you in a next meeting or two to approve additional work, to do the, you know, more detailed design work for them, this report contemplates you giving us the green light to be, for the finance director and I and our financial advisor to start doing some preliminary financial analysis work on doing a debt issuance to finance this project. So we can get the financing together and then we can go out to bid and be able to approve a construction contract.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that is, is good to understand. So the master park plan that is underway, we're planning site improvements of 3.8 million dollars. That 3.8, that's in this 37,200,000, or 39 million dollar total. What happens if we don't get the master park plan done for 14 months, 18 months?
We can certainly discuss how it fits into the larger picture for the master planning palette discussions. I think the point is to communicate with how it all integrates. So, so that we could be having those conversations while both tracks are moving forward.
Okay. But we would not go forward with the 3.8 million expense until we have a direction for the master park plan for Sunrise Park?
I think we would move forward knowing that we need to make landscaping improvements to the site. At least we'd like to recommend that we finance to and intend to do that. And we'll see how the master plan timing goes as far as, I mean, we are going to be looking at palettes that do fit the landscape, the region. And we'll coordinate with the master planning team as to how that becomes cohesive.
Okay. But the design, the RIO's design fees are incorporated into this scope of work in the 39 million dollars?
Yes.
That's part of the 3.8 million?
Yeah, the solve costs at the bottom.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions and I want to think I can summarize. David, you've had a lot of expertise. If you walked in here without hearing from anybody, what would you say should happen to the Frey Building? What you should be?
I think you should renovate it fully. I think if you had, could print money and build an addition, and the building would accept it, that would be great. But I don't see that as being a real feasible alternative. So I think the renovation is the right thing to do.
And you wouldn't say tear it down and put it something better?
No, not in service of the library, no.
Okay. And your use, your preferred use for that would be flexible use? Or would you have said this is great for the book sales and offices?
Well, I think those aren't opposed uses, that it's for the presently nearer term uses of the Friends and Foundation and the Archive, and that it can be, will be flexible space for the future.
Okay. So I think, I think I can sort of summarize because first of all, you know, again, I'm going to reiterate the role that our foundation and Board of Trustees and Friends of the Library, it's amazing, these experts and committed really volunteers who have spent a lot of time and effort on this. So I appreciate all of you and all of you speaking. What I want to say is that we are a very community-engaged city. And I know there's been a lot of discussion. The community meeting that we had was on a Wednesday afternoon in October at 3 o'clock. That is, by definition excludes a whole portion of our community, whether it's snowbirds, whether it's working parents, whether it's, and you know, people who couldn't get to the meetings, you know, and there was one meeting. And I looked at some of the questions you had in the kiosk and it's about, what's your vision? What do you, what's important to you? What do you want to see? As opposed to what we've all raised, what do you think is important for the future? Because what I want to see is very different than what I think should be here in 40 years. So according to this, you're going to be 65% done with the design phase in four months? So there is a lot of outreach that needs to be done, okay? And I don't want to, I know this may not be you, or maybe it's the city. I don't know how it's done. But you know, we want to have, you know, the Mizel, the Boys and Girls Club, the School District, we brought up, what do kids know? I mean, they're the best way to reach our kids, to see what we want in the future. Councilmember Garner brought up the excellent point of who doesn't use the library? And why not? And what's right for them? Because that's what we want to see. We want to talk to sustainability and our sustainability commissions to see what should be, what should be in this building, the parks and rec, how these other, you know, stadium and it all goes together. We want to make sure, I know we talked about our people with mobility issues, but we want to make sure that we're addressing all marginalized members of the community because that's really a lot of people who use a library. And we've seen this, whether it's as a cooling center, whether it's for the homeless, whether it's during the pandemic, kids who didn't have internet at home. I mean, these are all things that we want to do. I also think that if you go into more aspects of our community, you're going to find that we have a lot of experts on this. Not just library experts, but experts that like sort of envisioning the future. And we have, we have a whole group here that was putting on a futurist, studies futurism. So you know, they can talk to a lot about what, what we're going to see going forward. And I would like to see them involved in this. And, and this again, as I said in the beginning, is very different than everybody's project. The Plaza Theater had a very clear vision of what they want to see in the building, what they want to see programmed. We have a clear vision of sort of what we want now, but trying to figure out a library of the future is very difficult. And so I want to make sure, I think we're pretty much all in sync that we want to move forward with a, with a full design scope. I can almost guarantee you it's going to be probably a $50 million project because everything here is more expensive than we expect. And it's not, I know you have a lot of experience, but we have other issues with trying to get contractors, with heat, with all kinds of, you know, you're in a historic building, there's, there's all kinds of review process. So it's going to take more money. And so when we do it, we want to make sure that everybody has bought into this, that everybody understands what the vision is, that nobody can say they haven't had the opportunity to speak. Now, people will always say that. But we want to feel comfortable that we have given everybody and actually brought them in. You know, so having a community meeting is very different than saying to the head of the Boys and Girls Club, or the, or the Mizel, or the School District, we want you to actively and be involved in this project. And, and also again, I know we talked in Spanish language, but you know, we have other, other members of our community. So I think what we're saying, we're all pretty much agreeing, we want to go with a full-scale project. We want, we want staff to go forward with looking at a bond measure to raise funds. But with that comes a lot of, a lot of responsibility for the city. We have to make sure that we have some real project manager that is not a staff member trying to handle the bridge and the Plaza Theater and the Navigation Center and our roads and every other project that we're, we're doing because it's just too much for them. And that we, and that we come back with more conversations with council. And I don't know if this is all G4 or staff, or, or an outside consultant or how to best do that. But I think this is a $50 million, $45 million project that we have to feel has been fully, fully exposed to the community. And we have every piece of information. And it will actually help you and, and all of us because I think we have lots of people in our community who have their own plans going, and we don't always integrate. And the more that we can do that, the much better project that we will have. So I would say that we move to forward with a full project, that we go forward with the bond things with the expectation that we are going to have this intense degree of project management and community engagement in the next few months. Does that summarize what everybody thinks? Okay. This is 5-0. Okay. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Our first speaker is Abraham Ischak, followed by Zachary Flores.
My name is Abraham. I'm a Palm Springs resident. On October 12th, in the wake of the October 7 attack on Israel, the city council issued an emergency, emergency resolution stating that, "We, the City Council of Palm Springs, express our steadfast and united support for the state of Israel." Commenting on international affairs is already unprecedented for a local city council, but this resolution in particular was a mind-boggling gesture for those of us that know Israel has been committing the crimes of apartheid and ethnic cleansing for decades. Since October 7th, Israel has retaliated against Hamas by accelerating its genocide against all Palestinians. This has developed into an international emergency, the scale of which has not been seen since the Bosnian genocide of 30 years ago. In fact, the rate of killing today is as high as it was during the Holocaust. So dire is the situation that South Africa has invoked the Genocide Convention, taking Israel to the International Court of Justice with the backing of multiple other countries. The city council's unwillingness to rescind the October 12 resolution makes it clear that they're willing to bear the burden of the president that they have set for themselves. And yet they're silent on the genocide actively happening before their eyes. Could it be that the city council members are genocide deniers? No, they must know something that South Africa and legal experts across the world don't. Don't let me stop you then. Go ahead, issue another emergency resolution. This time, express your steadfast and united support for the defense of the International Court of Justice. Don't be afraid to tell the city of Palm Springs what you really mean. We stand with Israel. We stand with the genocide against Palestinians. We praise the legacy of the Bosnian genocide. We praise the legacy of the Armenian genocide. We praise the legacy of the Holocaust. If I am wrong, then prove it. Rescind the emergency resolution from October 12th, or live up to your progressive legacy and become the first city in the United States to release a resolution recognizing and condemning the Palestinian genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zachary Flores, followed by Max McCartney.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council members.
It's the other one, sir.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Zach Flores, I'm a resident in Palm Springs. I have come today to request the emergency resolution passed in October to be rescinded or amended. The resolution states our steadfast and united support for the state of Israel. Israel commits numerous human rights violations and is currently committing war crimes. How many council members currently sit on or have participated in human rights organization boards? Yet each and every one of you have yet to publicly speak up against the human rights violations that Israel continues to commit. Why didn't any of you speak up on October 12th? And why haven't any of you spoken up since? Malcolm X once said, "If you're not careful, the newspapers will have you hating the people who are being oppressed and loving the people who are doing the oppressing." This is what Palm Springs has done. We have publicly sided with the oppressor. I ask you to please consider rescinding or amending the resolution from October 12th and releasing a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Max McCartney, followed by Mo Alabdallah.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Max McCartney. I'm a resident here of Palm Springs. And I'm here today to ask city council to amend the emergency resolution passed on October 12th and release an additional resolution requesting a ceasefire in Gaza. While it is right to support a state, a territory, or a country when one has to defend itself, it is immoral to stand by while one carries out genocide and ethnic cleansing as the Israeli Defense Force is doing. Over 23,210 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza since October 7th, 70% of which are women and children, which is just insane to me. 7,000 are missing, presumed trapped under rubble or taken to the Israeli, or taken by the Israeli Defense Force to undisclosed locations. There is no safe space or place in Gaza, and Palestinian civilians are trapped. The images coming out of Gaza before and since October 7th are jarring. And so we must call for a ceasefire. So again, I ask you to please amend the emergency resolution passed on October 12th and release an additional resolution requesting a ceasefire for Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mo Alabdallah, followed by Dr. Jesse Niemeyer-Romero.
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Mo. I've been a resident of Palm Springs for the last seven years now. Public speaking isn't really my thing, so I'm just going to read off my phone right now. I was not aware that the city had passed an I was not aware that the city had passed an emergency resolution, um, expressing unequivocal support for Israel until just last week. And to be frank, I found that news to be very upsetting and morally irresponsible. Although you may think this conflict started on October 7th, the truth of the matter is that the state of Israel has been committing genocide and ethnic cleansing for the last 75 years. And Gaza has been suffocating under an illegal land, sea, and air blockade for the last 16 years, where Israel controls everything going in and coming out of Gaza. You can get, you can Google this list for yourselves and see how specific these items get. Certain chocolates and even types of toothpaste are among the listed items. And more recently, water filters were added to the list of banned humanitarian aid items allowed into Gaza. I would have liked to think that the city of Palm Springs, a town that prides itself on acceptance and standing up for equality for all human beings, would have done a little more research before making such a bold statement. It's been over three months now since this war started, and today, the International Court of Justice heard South Africa's case against Israel. Public opinion is shifting, and it's only a matter of time before Israel is exposed for what it really is, an apartheid state that is committing genocide. I would like the city council to amend or rescind the emergency resolution passed on October 12 and release an additional resolution requesting a ceasefire. I urge you to stand with humanity and to be on the right side of history. Lastly, I'd like to say that the Holocaust was real, antisemitism is real, and never again means never again for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Jesse Niemeyer-Romero.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Jesse Niemeyer-Romero, and I'm a resident here of Palm Springs. This is the second time that I have come here to speak on the resolution that you passed on October 12. I continue to question if it was really appropriate for our local government, like yourselves, to pass a resolution on international affairs. When my students study local government this semester, I plan on using this issue and this council as a case study for them to examine. It will be interesting to see what the young people of this valley think of your actions as it relates to the wisdom of making comment on, or making comment on international matters. San Jose doesn't allow their city council to pass resolutions related to foreign policy measures. Berkeley declined to pass any resolution related to the conflict in order to avoid problematic posturing. However, this city has decided to wade into international waters, as it were, and join the big leagues. In the meantime, I repeat my call for this council to consider a follow-up resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire and the end to the bloodshed taking place right now in the Middle East. And if not a new resolution rescinding the one passed on October 12 that expresses, quote, "steadfast support of Israel." Two days ago, the supervisors of San Francisco approved a resolution calling for an extended ceasefire in Gaza. In November, Oakland passed a ceasefire resolution as well. Palm Springs should do the same, if it must make comment on the situation. Earlier this week, I attended a film screening as part of the film festival, where the experiences of three generations of a Palestinian family were examined in relation to the events of 1948. How many more generations will be further affected by what is happening now in Gaza? How many generations will be affected by your steadfast support of a state that is committing international war crimes? A ceasefire must be called upon now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to take a look at the future two meetings coming up. We'll have, uh, a presentation at the next meeting on the College of the Desert and the update on, uh, plans for the university campus there. We will be, uh, police department will be coming back to talk about the automated license plate reader cameras by private entities that we talked about a month or so ago. We are going to be bringing back the cannabis ordinance regulations, uh, that you had asked us to do, and will be, um, actually presenting, um, information about the college park-specific plan, uh, desert gateway plan, and that work that was started right before COVID and then got put on, uh, got put on hold, uh, right before COVID hit. And then, as you heard earlier today, the, uh, we'll have the airport staff here talking about the airport terminal design work that they've been working through with the Airport Commission. Following that, in February, uh, we do have several items related to our community development block, block grant program, and update on rental assistance, affordable housing programs. Our legal staff want to give it, give us an update on the opioid settlement funds program that we're, uh, funds we're, we're receiving, and we're going to be prepared to go out for our zoning code update, request for proposal. So we'll be talking about that in a couple of meetings. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other council member, uh, agenda items or comments? Uh, Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yeah, I was planning on being here on January 25, but, uh, some plans have changed, so I'm not going to be here, and I'm very engaged in the cannabis ordinance, um, and what would come from that. Is this just going to be a discussion item, or is a, a draft ordinance coming to council?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think it is, uh, some, uh, draft ordinance and regulations, and we can easily move that to a future meeting if that's the wishes of you and your colleagues. I don't think that's a problem for us.
Yeah, beautiful. Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
I would ask that we do it, is it possible to the next one? I know some of the members of the cannabis community are...
Every week.
Yeah. Is that, is that one, can we move it to that one?
That, certainly we'll make that change.
And the ALPR camera, that is a discussion, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, and Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so, um, I hope we all remember and take time to think about Dr. Martin Luther King on Monday. Um, and, uh, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned at 8:21.